Good evening. It is Monday, September 8th. I'd like to call this regular school board meeting to order. Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. We've got a packed house this evening, which is always nice to see. Superintendent Board, as we get rolling today, any changes, amendments, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
A pleasure.
I do have one. The attachments were added to item 8.10 and a new link added to 811 today, and the board has copies of item 811.
Perfect. Any objection to those changes, Board? All right, here are none. We'll move forward with the approval of the minutes. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I recommend approval of the minutes from the regular school board meeting, August 25th, 2025.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Ms. Mathiase, second by Mr. Dodd. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Representation, we've got a handful this evening. Coming up to start will be Mr. Rob Felton.
All right, thank you, Board. Superintendent, I would like to defer to Dr. Felton in the STEAM awards. This would be fantastic to share this award with the schools, so thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Brandenburg, Superintendent, and School Board members. It brings me great joy and pride to be here this evening to recognize the hard work and dedication of schools in pursuit of rigorous learning opportunities for students in the area of science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. In order to qualify to be a STEAM school, schools must prepare portfolios showcasing their efforts and provide evidence that they've met and established criteria. Here to tell you more about that and recognize our recipients is Kathy McMurray, K-12 Science Program Specialist, and Tracy Wood, K-5 Program Specialist, math program specialist here in Lake County.
Thank you, Dr. Felton. The elementary requirements include six components: a STEAM collaborative team at each of the campuses, and at least four STEAM lessons through the course of the year which integrate science, technology, engineering, math, and art provided at all grade levels; a STEAM Bowl team for grades three to five, which practices from October through March or April, and then competes at the county STEAM Bowl; also, full participation in both the school science fair and the district science fair, as well as hosting a STEAM night at their school. Schools earning the Gold STEAM Award have achieved all of these requirements with full participation. Schools earning the Silver STEAM Award have achieved a majority of the criteria, and that is no small undertaking. The Bronze STEAM School recognizes the hard work and dedication to establishing a STEAM culture at their school level. Both the school and the STEAM school coordinator participate in a year-long commitment for this. And now, Tracy Wood, to announce the winners.
Good evening. We will ask that you come up, start over here, start with Mrs. McMurray, and then work your way down. For the Bronze STEAM Triangle Elementary... For the Silver STEM Treadway Elementary... Lost Lake Elementary... Rhymes Early Learning Center... Sawgrass Bay Elementary... Seminole Springs Elementary... And Umatilla Elementary. Congratulations to all of our elementary winners. If you will go up and shake hands with the board members, please.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well done. Congratulations.
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 Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Congratulations.
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 Good job.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations. Indeed, thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
I can do it.
Well done. Congratulations. My pleasure. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
After all the winners are called, we're going to take a group picture. After all the winners are called, we're going to take a group picture in the rotunda. So please don't leave.
Unless you want to.
Now for our K-8 schools for the Gold Steam, we have Imagine Schools of South Lake. Spring Creek Charter. And our middle schools for Gold Steam, East Ridge Middle. Eustace Middle. Mount Dora Middle. Taveri's Middle. Hill Middle. Our high school Gold Steam winners. East Ridge High School. Mount Dora High School. And South Lake High School. We would like to congratulate all the winners this year. And if this group will go ahead and make your way up to see the board.
Congratulations again to all of our winners and thank you to Dr. Felton and the CIA team for putting that together for us this evening. All right, we'll give them all a minute to clear out. Next up on the agenda will be our public input. So Elizabeth Emery, if you'd like to come up as they start to clear out.
Thank you Chair Brandenburg, Board Members and Superintendent Corningey. I'm happy to be here to continue our conversation and collaboration. The last time I spoke, I shared a little bit about my time as a student here with Lake County Schools. I spent most of my life in Lake County Schools as a student, teacher and coach, and I've seen firsthand the power of public education. As an educator, I've had the privilege of directly teaching over 1,300 students and coaching over 600 athletes. My students have gone on to top universities, overcome incredible challenges, and some have become educators themselves. Proof of the ripple effect just one teacher can have. I love my teachers and I'm sure you can think of at least one educator who significantly impacted your life. All students deserve the same experiences you, I and my students have had. No matter what our roles are, we all care about the future of our children. We all want the same thing. For every child in Lake County to have access to a world-class public education. My goal, along with that and my colleagues, is to ensure our students are well-prepared for their future. When we work together to meet this goal, we can achieve strong communities and economic prosperity. We've made real progress and I want to thank you for your support and your role in this progress. Lake County Schools is now an A-rated district for the first time since I graduated from Lake County Schools and with a graduation rate of over 93%. That is something to celebrate. But behind those numbers is a growing challenge. In the past three years, we've lost over 1,000 educators in Lake County Schools. According to a 2024 analysis by the Learning Policy Institute, the turnover of just one teacher in a district our size costs the district about $16,000. Considering the impact of just one teacher, we can imagine the significant negative impact this turnover has on taxpayer dollars and our students' success. We can all agree that more work lies ahead. Our educators are telling us what they need to stay and thrive. Fair compensation and support for rising costs. Safe, healthy working conditions and a voice in the decisions that impact their classroom. We ask for your continued partnership to ensure a focus on these areas. Focusing on what educators need will stabilize our workforce and strengthen our schools. These solutions are rooted in the lived experience of our schools. We know what educators, when educators are supported, students succeed. And when students succeed, our entire community benefits. We are excited to keep the conversation going and we want to be a resource to you. Let's build on what's working and continue to improve our schools for all Lake County residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next is Ms. Jessica Sewicki.
Good evening, Chair Brandenburg, Superintendent Corningey and Board Members and our community. It is an honor to stand before you today as the new Vice President of LCA. My journey to this moment began long before I ever stepped into a classroom as an educator. When I was in third grade and my little brother Bobby was in first grade, we were taken away from our mother and placed into foster care. During that difficult time, my third-grade public school teacher, Mrs. Huckrow, changed the course of my life. She didn't just teach me to read, write and do math. She showed me compassion, empathy and support when I needed it the most. She became the role model I wanted to be. By sixth grade, I had already decided I wanted to be a principal because I wanted to make the rules. Not long after, my brother and I were adopted into our forever family. We gained two loving parents and another brother, and from then on, public schools became the foundation of my life. I was a soccer player, volleyball player, ran track and sang in chorus. Through chorus, I traveled to Philadelphia to compete, to Montreal to see the Phantom of the Opera. I went to France with my French class. These opportunities were possible because of public education. I am also a proud graduate of Lake Sumter Community College. From there, I enrolled in the 2+2 program and completed my bachelor's degree in elementary education at Lake Sumter Community College South Campus through UCF. The only private school I ever attended was Full Sail University where I earned my master's degree. My entire journey, like my K through 12 years, has been rooted in public education. Those experiences shaped who I am today. My son graduated from a Florida public school in 2024 and my daughter is currently enrolled in Umatilla Middle. And yes, while LCA fully supports parents having the choice of where to send their child to school, that choice must never come at the expense of public education. Public education must be fully funded to give all our children the chance to transform their lives for the better, just as it transformed me. It is because of the teachers and opportunities I had that I stand before you today. As Vice President, I am committed to working with you, with our educators and with our community to ensure that every child has the same chances to learn, grow and dream big. Together, we can build schools that don't just educate, they transform lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Well done. Next up, Ms. Bobby Blagio.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Bobby Blagio and I am a teacher at the Leesburg High School and a board member of Lake County Education Association. I want to share with you my why. I believe that God put me on this earth to make a difference. I teach at Leesburg High School where I chose to teach because I want to make a difference in the lives of my students. In my four years teaching English and reading at Leesburg High School, I have empowered over 300 seniors to meet the English Language Arts Florida Testing Requirement for Graduation and I currently have about 80 on my roster right now. I accomplished this one student, one lesson, one conversation, one nagging phone call at a time because it's the little things that make big things happen. It's the little things that make a difference. I joined Lake County Education Association because I want to make a difference one teacher at a time. LCEA provides our educators with a listening ear, a caring heart and a collective voice. It's the little things that make a difference. I love working at Lake County Schools. I enjoy what I do, but I want more. More for my instructional colleagues, more for our non-instructional folks, more for our students and more for my community. I want Lake County Schools to become A, destination occupation for faculty and staff, and A, destination education for our precious students and families. See how I worked in the As there?
No.
How are we going to do that?
You can do that again.
How are we going to do that? I submit to you that it is by paying attention to the little things. What are we doing to empower our educators, to inspire their professionalism? How are we valuing our non-instructional staff? What are we doing to create strong leaders who facilitate collaboration, cohesion and consistency at our sites? How are we creating environments where students, faculty and staff can thrive? As we celebrate our A grade as a district, it is time for us to look around and find the little things that make Lake County Schools great and the little things that may cause us to stumble or falter. I challenge you to really see for yourself what is happening in Region 2 schools, to listen to our faculty and staff, to examine our facilities, to spend more time in our classrooms, to walk our campuses, to eat in our cafeterias when the students are present, to ride our buses, to spend time in our discipline offices, to hang out in our staff rooms, to make a difference. One teacher, one staff member, one student, one family at a time. Let's collaborate and cooperate to make Lake County Schools A, destination occupation for employees and A, destination education for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Blagio. Well done. Next up, Mr. Farmer Banks.
Farmer Banks-Helfrich, Clay Road District, South Lake County, Farm Tip of the Day. There are two growing seasons in Florida. One is the spring and summer, which is the warm season. The other is the fall and winter, which is the cool season. You can grow crops year-round in Florida. Board, Madam Superintendent, distinguished guests. What gets you up in the morning? As a child, many of us get up because we want to play, we want adventure, we want something fun, we're curious. For me, it was cartoons on Saturday morning. As we get older, it is education and since we are here at the school board, education is very important to us. We learn, we explore and we even go on to college and beyond. As we get a little bit older, it is to work, to raise a family, to work for that family. And then later in life, like myself, many of us wake up because we are pushed towards service. And there are seven ups to service. First one, which is the most difficult, is to wake up, metaphorically and also realistically. Second, it is to dress up. Third is the second most difficult up, and that is to show up. Next, it is to listen up, to speak up and to follow up. And then last, certainly not least, is to never, ever get up. These ups are there because not only we care, but others matter to us. So, wake up, dress up, show up, listen up, speak up, follow up and never, ever give up. Thank you. I am Farmer Banks-Helfrich. May you all be blessed. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Farmer Banks, as always. And last, but certainly not least, I think I'm going to get it, Leland, but Leland Thoreau?
Wow.
I know I butchered it last time. I was trying to remember.
Hi, I'm Leland Terrio. You're so close. I represent Lake County Arts. We recently launched rehearsals for our new community choir and I'm thrilled to share that we've already welcomed 150 participants in the choir. The ages 14 and up. And we rehearse on Tuesday evenings from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the Clermont Performing Arts Center and you are all warmly invited to stop by or even sing with us. In partnership with the Orlando Philharmonic Orchestra, we're excited to bring the Young People's Concert to Lake County this fall. These concerts are scheduled for November 13th and 14th. Two performances at Lake Mineola High School and South Lake Students on Thursday. And then two performances at Leesburg High School in North Lake on Friday. We would like to invite all of you to attend the VIP event that we are hosting at Lake Mineola High School on Thursday, November 13th at 9:30 in the morning. The concert begins at 10:30 and we would be honored to have you stay with us and witness firsthand what these concerts are going to do for our students. Finally, this coming Friday, Professional Development Day, September 12th, we're hosting a countywide meeting with all the Lake County music teachers, K through 12, at the Mission Inn and Howie and the Hills. This professional development event will introduce our mission and vision and offer targeted breakout sessions. Topics include elementary teachers exploring the young people's concerts and classroom integrations, middle school teachers, we're going to talk about expanding their program development, and high school educators reviewing how students can earn their Florida Seal of Fine Arts with recognition at graduation. We'll also work on vertical alignment across grade levels to ensure continuity and progression in music education from elementary through graduation. Thank you all for your continued support of the arts and our Lake County students. And we want to thank the Mount Dora Community Trust, who recently promised to fund the transportation for the young people's concerts in North Lake County and is sponsoring our professional development this Friday. I am leaving. Stack of business cards. I finally got them. Business cards for all of you. This is my personal contact information on the back. You can feel free to contact me anytime with any thoughts or questions. Thank you. And can I leave these with the secretary?
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Terrio. What was the November date again?
November 13. November 13. 9:30 we will gather for coffee. 10:30 is the concert.
Very good.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That is all the cards I received this evening. Would anybody else like to give a public comment before we move on? All right, seeing none, we're going to move forward to the reports this evening. First up, the Education Foundation Report. Dr. Elizabeth Johnson.
Good evening, Chairman, Superintendent, Board Members. I hope everyone is doing well. I've just passed off to Natalie to come your way our 2024-2025 Impact Report to share. And I'm excited to highlight and let you all know that the Education Foundation invested $1.9 million back into the Lake County School District this last school year. This year, our teachers are making the most of the Apple Mart stores. We've had 262 teachers visit the Apple Mart locations. We estimate $40,610 worth of school supplies have gone to our teachers this year so far and we've had the most visits at the Leesburg and Mascot locations. On September 23rd, we will be at Triangle Elementary School to host our third New Worlds Reading Initiative Program Event for the year. And then on October 10th, we'll be hosting the Scott Strong Memorial Golf Tournament. We have three team spots left and our registration closes on September 23rd for that event. The Lady of the Lakes Renaissance Fair is only 54 days away, but who's counting? November 1st, 2nd, 7th, 8th and 9th was November 7th being our education day is right around the corner. We've had over 100 vendors apply for our 65 vendor spots. We held cast auditions on August 23rd. We had 157 participants in that audition day and 52 of them are students that will be joining us this year for the fair. The Education Foundation Board is also excited to share that they approved 21 Teacher Impact Grants during our August meeting, which equated to more than $36,000 going to our teachers for projects this year. And then finally, we installed two new board members at our August meeting. Erica Corley of Cecil Clark Chevrolet and Lindsay Johnson of South State Bake. Any questions? Great. Thank you.
Great work, as always. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. And moving on to 6.02, the Attorney Report. Mr. Cole, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, sir.
All right. We also don't have any unfinished business, so moving on to the Consent Agenda. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I do. I recommend approval of Consent Agenda Items 8.01 to 10.04.
Submit.
Got a motion by Mr. Mathias, second by Dr. Luke. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. There are no discussion items this evening, so we will next move on to the Superintendent's Report.
All right, just a few things. First of all, congratulations to all of our STEAM schools we recognized this evening. Also, congratulations to three of our schools, actually four of our schools. It was announced recently that these four schools have been recognized for successfully building a school-wide PBIS. That's Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support Frameworks and have been named PBIS Model Schools. They are Pine Ridge Elementary, which earned Gold Status, Rhymes Early Learning Center and Astetula Elementary earned Silver and Mount Dora High School earned Bronze. And also this week, many of our schools will host remembrance events and observance of what the Florida Department of Education is calling 9/11 Heroes Day. Our middle and high school students will receive instruction on the terrorist attacks that occurred on September 11th, 2001, focusing and recognizing the historical context, including the heroes of that day, which includes the first responders and civilians and the subsequent humanitarian aid. And this instruction became a requirement in 2023, but it was not new for our districts. We have long made it a priority to remember the lives that were lost and forever changed on that day and the heroes that emerged. We will continue to honor and remember them, especially this week.
Thank you, Superintendent. Dr. Luke, any comments this evening?
No, I just wanted to follow up with the STEAM awards. It's always such an amazing recognition and I think it's a testament to the hard work of the district staff as well and all they do throughout the year to support STEAM education with kindergarten through 12th grade, which I think is very impressive that they continue it through the secondary level. I know it started smaller and it has just continued to grow and impact so many students, which is a wonderful thing. And then the other thing I was going to say was I've been seeing posts all over social media about the selections of the Teachers of the Year candidates and how exciting that time is. And when Dr. Johnson started speaking, it reminded me of that upcoming ceremony. It seems like it's forever way, but we are recognizing those people now. So congratulations to all of those that have been recognized by their schools as being such impactful leaders. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. Cunningham.
I would just like to compliment the ladies from LCEA on sharing with us your why. I think if there's anyone present who doesn't know what your why is for what you do, it's really important that you know that because usually it's tied to something that goes far back in your life and it's something that you worked for all your life. Jessica, I know you know my why because you've heard me share and I'm not going to do that tonight, but I will tell you that mine started when I was six with my great-grandmother. And it's always refreshing to hear someone else talk about what theirs is. So thank you, ladies. It was a pleasure listening to you and congratulations to all the STEAM schools. That's it, sir.
Mr. Dudo and Dido, I tell you, this has been a very inspiring meeting and I guess I'll check off both of those items. You know, I was really moved hearing your personal stories tonight and so that's the kind of stuff and the kind of message that we certainly need to get out there right now as we face a lot of battles in public education. So I appreciate all of you for carrying that torch because certainly we need a lot of people carrying it right now. Tonight, in our Consent Agenda, there were just like hundreds of millions of dollars there approved, essentially. You know, 8.07, I'll just circle back to the district's five-year capital plan. And I just remember when I stepped onto this board and certainly Bill and Stephanie, you recall as well, how our capital plan really had like no projects in it because we were just so saddled with debt. It was nearly a half a billion dollars at the time. So I'm just really thankful to the stewardship of the board and to the district for being able to get us in a place where we've paid down that debt now as we can celebrate less than $100 million in debt. It's funny that you're celebrating less than $100 million in debt, but that's a huge milestone for us because a payoff is in sight, essentially. And with that, we can just continue to provide for facilities for schools, for our students and our teachers who need them, that we can be renovating all these schools that are just decades and decades old and be able to still also provide facilities, new state-of-the-art facilities for just, you know, incredible innovative programs. And so I'm just really thankful for that stewardship and, you know, it makes proven capital plans like that just super easy when we're able to provide for the students who need those facilities.
Mr. Mathias?
Outstanding comments. Oh, yeah. I did want to recognize, I thought I was the only one that was really moved by the three of you coming up and giving your why. And it was, it's inspirational, I will say that. And it's humbling for us to be up here to serve such amazing teachers and staff and administrators. And we know that burden that you all face and we try to make it a little bit easier where we can. So just know that.
Per usual, Dido, Dido, Dido and Dido. Congratulations to our STEAM schools and to LCA. Thank you for your continued partnership and always being here at our board meetings and every other thing that you do for our district. It does not go unnoticed and we do appreciate that very much. Kelly, Helen, the rest of your team in growth planning and construction, thank you for all the work that goes into that capital plan and all the work beyond just putting it on paper, but how you make it happen. That certainly is appreciated and doesn't go unnoticed. And thank you to the board for a very productive workshop last week on some big projects and how we're going to handle those moving forward. I appreciate it when we can really have that level of dialogue and get to the bottom of difficult decisions. So thank you for that. Also want to give a shout out to Rob Oyer, Marisol and their team in Risk Management. We had another Productive Insurance Advisory Committee meeting last week with the help of LCEA and SEIU and others, talking mainly about the future of our clinics and the providers that we have the opportunity to bring in moving forward to improve the quality of that care. So looking forward to getting back on the roadshow circuit. Thank you, Elizabeth, for that suggestion and Mr. Ward for going along with it to go out and do some Q and A with a selected vendor and also make sure staff is included in those decisions so that we can continue to make the best decision we can moving forward. Did we miss anything this evening? Any objection to adjourning?
Yes, sir.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.